...continue medical research and obtain a doctorate. Right now, I'm a proud senior at C M I T Academy and I am aiming for an Ivy League college. Now, I want to welcome you to the October 25th, 2016 Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting. Highlights this evening will include a news break, a STEM celebration. Additionally, under new business, the Board of Education will address the adoption of the 2017 legislative platform in the 2017-2018 school calendar, along with the 2018-2019 tentative school calendar. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the October 25th, 2016 Board of Education Meeting will begin. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening fellow citizens. Welcome to the October 25th, 2016 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. How about another great round of applause for Carlia Williams-Lox from Chesapeake Math I N T Academy. Another stellar example of the talented and capable young people who go through our schools each and every day. Thank you for being a wonderful example of our great public school system. As always, before we begin, I'd like to thank everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and the taping of the meetings and ask Mr. Valentine if you would please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. O God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson, please call the roll.
Certainly, sir. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Dr. Anderson. Mr. Blocker.
Here.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Burrows. Ms. Epps.
Present.
Ms. Eubanks.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Here.
Ms. Quintero-Grady.
Present.
Ms. Roach. Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace.
Present.
Mrs. Williams. Dr. Eubanks.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, do I have a motion on the agenda?
Move to move item 10.1, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items Up to 3.0 Public Agenda on Agenda Items.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move non-agenda items up to agenda items on the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed. Thank you. That motion carries. May I have a motion to adopt the October 25th, 2016 Board Meeting Agenda as amended? May I have a second? It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed. Thank you, colleagues. That motion carries. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2016 Board Work Session. Moved by Ms. Boston. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Valentine. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. All those opposed. Thank you, colleagues. That motion carries. We'll now move on to item 2.6 where we have a news break entitled "The STEM Celebration."
As a group of seventh graders at Thomas Johnson Middle School recently discovered, getting windmills to actually spin and generate energy is far more subtle and challenging than it looks. The would-be engineers gambled with different blade shapes, struggled with their teammates to assemble the tower, and then watched nervously to see if the wind would actually get beneath their sails. But even when the blades balked, these science, technology, engineering, and math students, STEM for short, adjusted and persevered, all on their own. What'd you do to make it work?
We figured out that if you just put like one like flat, it's not going to capture much wind. So we made it into like a V shape, like a triangle, so it could capture more wind and it could spin faster. You gotta think and you gotta work with your partners to make it more better than the rest. And if you mess up, you learn from it and you redo it and then you become better and better at it.
In STEM, they learn how, first they have to learn how to do research because they are not given instruction, a detailed instruction. All I give them is a challenge. Like for this one, they have to design a blade that will generate power. But I did not give them step one, two, no.
Ms. Rayala is just a teacher that has really impacted me. It's my like second year in STEM and she has really done a good job with other activities and I think because of her, she's an inspiration to me.
So taken is Shawal and her classmates by Mrs. Rayala's STEM class that many are anticipating STEM careers of their own, even if it means being a pioneer. So do you want to be an engineer?
Yes, because a lot of boys are being engineers and they say girls can't be engineers. But I believe that girls can be engineers because there's not a lot of girl engineers.
You go girl, right?
Yes.
Yeah, alright. Nanga isn't alone in her ambitions. For at the county's first ever STEM Expo held recently at Camelot, she and her Thomas Johnson colleagues were joined by hundreds of other middle and high school students who have similar dreams. Surrounded by vendors, many with yet more acronyms like NASA, GEMS, and WSSC, and hands-on opportunities to make everything from bridge prototypes to catapults. Flinging those marshmallows in the hallway was lots of fun. The students needed no encouragement to dive right in. Take the builders of an underwater robot called a sea perch. Why'd they build this thing?
It can be used for many things, like it can be used for exploration and it can be used just for overall underwater tasks that are too hard for humans to do now.
Yeah. You guys thinking about going into a STEM career? You thinking about being an engineer? What are you thinking?
Yeah, well, when I go to Oxon Hill High School, I'm thinking of joining the Science and Tech Program. And when I grow up, I'll plan to be a doctor.
Wow, that's cool. What about you?
And I plan on being a physicist because you know, math and science are my favorite two subjects, so they go hand in hand.
It's no wonder the STEM field has sparked student interest. With today's 3D printers, Mars on the cusp of human exploration, and sophisticated robots, the important thing is to sustain the fascination, something Prince George's County Public Schools has been doing with STEM for the last 40 years.
So in 1976, Roosevelt was doing some cutting-edge things that are now commonplace, not only in our district but in other districts and other schools. One of the biggest things being that we want our students to be in math for four years. We were saying that back in the 70s, right? Our state just passed the law a few years ago. And so, we're celebrating the fact that we started that walk even before it was cool. Now it's cool to say STEM. We know that if we can have activities and experiences where they're engaging with real career people, where they're doing authentic things, and having time to think about and reflect about questions and careers, then we could possibly keep that spark going.
The fervor of STEM's 40th anniversary was felt too by elementary school students, like those back at Capitol Heights who were being blown away by balloon power and lighting up right along with their successful circuits. But it was some Oxon Hill High School students at the Expo who probably best expressed what science has meant and continues to mean to them.
And science is what makes the world go around. Like without science, we breathe, we live, we eat. There's nothing without science, technology, engineering, mathematics, our phones, these interviews, cameras, microphones, everything's science.
Do you think you're going to go on and do something with science as it made that kind of impression on you?
Yeah, actually, science will help fill that interest. I was studying cardiology and that's what I want to do with science in the future. So I really think that's what I want to do.
So you're going to be a doctor someday. You're going to be a good one. You're all going to be good at whatever you do. You're welcome. So happy 40th anniversary to STEM and thanks to all the careers it's created and those just waiting to happen. This is Dave Zinn.
Thank you. How rewarding it is to see our budding scientists and mathematicians and doctors who will stand beside our budding artists and writers and lawyers and business people who will lead us into the next generation. What a wonderful thing to see. Thank you to our news break team for that great report. We'll now move on to the Chair's Report. I'll start today with a point of just some great pride on behalf of one of my fellow board members. In fact, just today, Board Member Lupi Quinteros-Grady was awarded by the Center for Non-Profite Advancement the reward of the Phyllis Campbell Newsom Public Service Award for the tremendous work she does not only in the Board of Education but with all of the great community service work that she does and leadership work that she does. Let's give her a round of applause. Any highlights from the event you want to share?
It was just really humbling. It was a great gathering this morning, a lot of different nonprofits and just it was great to represent Prince George's County and some of the positive things we do have going on. So it was just a great event. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaking of great events, I was again filled with pride this last week on October 19th when Dr. Maxwell gave the State of the Education System Address hosted by the Greater Prince George's County Roundtable. The event was opened up by County Executive Baker who reminded us powerfully that for us to achieve the greatness that is our destiny in Prince George's County, it's not Dr. Maxwell's job alone, it's not the school board's job alone, it is all of the elected officials in this county, it's all of the community leaders, it's all of the parents and citizens and yes, even the students who must work together in order to move our system forward and powerfully set the stage for the work that is ahead of us. Dr. Maxwell followed with a powerful event that resonated in his statement particularly, "We will keep moving past challenges toward greatness." He outlined the work that we have accomplished and the challenges we still must face. And I stand today in solidarity with that statement that we will keep moving past challenges toward greatness and we will do so by working and moving together. The data academically in this system is promising, it continues to grow. Our graduation rates are at an all-time high at approximately 79%. Our data shows that we are the highest, that our African-American students outperform their peers across the state in reading comprehension and our middle school students from low-income families rank among the highest in the state in English and Language Arts. We have the right markers to show that we're heading in the right direction academically. Make no mistake, we have a lot more work that needs to be done. We have faced crisis this year and there's no secret about it. But we know that facing crisis by coming together and searching for solutions, by not giving up, by learning from our mistakes, by listening to the productive critiques and productive suggestions from our citizens, from our students, from our parents, and from our colleagues across the state and across the nation is key and central. But we know we will not become great with divisiveness or bitterness or blaming and finger pointing. We will indeed come together. I am reminded in this very interesting political time about the wrong way to go about facing crisis and we're seeing it on a national level. And I'm reminded of the words of my new absolute favorite political figure of this generation, Michelle Obama. By the way, if you didn't read, if you didn't watch that speech that Michelle Obama gave in New Hampshire, drop everything you're doing and go listen to that speech. But she reminds us on a regular basis, when they go low, we go high. So we are going to stay high. We are going to stay united. We're going to stay focused on doing what it takes to give a great education to every student in every school every day. We know that we have challenges. But Dr. Maxwell, your speech on the state of the education system that gave an honest assessment of what those challenges are and pointed us in a direction to go ahead, we are going to continue to work with you and I will commit everything I can do in my power to make sure that this school district does not give up on a single child and a single family any day that the school system continues to thrive and grow. So thank you again. Thank you for your team. Thank you to board members who came out and those who couldn't make it for that powerful address. We know that when we work together and we stay focused and we move in the right direction, greatness is our destiny. Alright, we have greatness is our destiny and we have meetings as well. So a couple announcements about upcoming meetings. On November 8th is Election Day. There are no meetings actually on that day except the most important meeting that every one of us has to do as citizens, the meeting that we have in the election booth. Please do go out and vote on November 8th. Election Day, schools and offices will be closed. On November 10th, we have a board meeting at 1:00 PM. And on December 8th, we have a capital improvement program meeting at 5:00 PM. And I believe not on my list but on December 5th at 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM, we will have a swearing in of new board members who will be joining the board. Meetings of the board are held here at the SASSA building in this boardroom. Persons interested in speaking at meetings of the board must register with the Office of the Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-925-6115. That concludes my Chair's remarks and I will turn it over to the County Chief Executive Officer for his report.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. And members of the board, I would like to begin this evening my remarks by talking about the Partners for Success Awards Dinner last week. The Prince George's County Community College Foundation presented our school system with an award for our partnership centered around the Academy of Health Sciences. The academy was the first middle-college program in the state and provides students with accessible, affordable, and rigorous learning experience in the health sciences field. This is just one of the many times our school district has been recognized for excellence over the past several years. At this time, I would like to recognize a person that has really brought it to fruition, Dr. Kathy Richard Andrews. Rashard Andrews for her outstanding leadership at the Academy of Health Sciences and I would ask her to please come forward and receive a token of our appreciation and to take a picture with the board. You make us so very proud. I join Dr. Eubanks and the board. I also had a note here about Ms. Grady's award today, the Phyllis Campbell Newsom Public Policy Award and I offer my congratulations as well. And then as Dr. Eubanks mentioned, we did present the State of the System Address last week. We're going to continue that work and I look forward also to sharing a similar message with families and community members during an evening event planned for next month. More details will be available in the coming weeks. Meanwhile, to continue the conversation, we started with the Prince George's County families during our TeleTown Hall meeting on October 4th. We'll also be hosting a community summit on safety and accountability on November 5th. The event will be held at Ernest E. Just Middle School in Mitchellville, starting at 10:00 AM. And you can find out more information on our website at www.pgcps.org. And finally, we have redesigned the PGCPS website to make it more user and mobile friendly. You can preview the new site now by clicking on the Check It Out button on the upper right, in the upper right-hand corner of our homepage. The new website will be rolled out in its entirety by January. Mr. Chair, this concludes my remarks.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Maxwell, for your report. We will now go on to item 3.0, Public Comment on Both Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. Colleagues, we have 16 registered speakers today speaking on non-agenda items. So I'm going to just briefly talk, go over the guidelines, if that's okay. You have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, please complete that final sentence only. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another individual, whether registered or unregistered. Please do not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. And also, you're encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, superintendent, assistant superintendent, etc. Finally, if you have a hard copy of your comments, please do leave the statement in the file box located next to the microphone so that we can keep them for the record. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable public participation process to move smoothly. Thank you again for coming out. And we start this evening with Adelia Jones, a student, to talk about grading policy. One second. Could you sit there and do time because no one is there? Erica? Okay, alright.
Hello, Prince George's County Public School Board Members. I'm Adelia Jones, a senior from Eleanor Roosevelt High. I've come today to speak about the new honors grading scale policy. Many students, including myself, are grateful for the new honors class grading policy because now we can be compensated for our hard work with an additional .5 credit compared to regular class. Yet many of us students who have taken honors all throughout high school are frustrated because our past honors transcript grades are not affected by this policy. It is unfair for students who have worked hard in honors classes in former school years to receive regular credit. Making the honors policy retroactive makes things fair for our students and helps students overall GPAs. Why was the new honors policy created now if honors classes in the past and present have the same curriculum? Since honor classes are not different from how they were in the past and current transcript grades should have the same weighing policy. Similar policies in Montgomery County Public Schools have already taken effect since 2006. Until now, PGCPS decided to change the honors policy in the county. While making it unfair for sophomores, juniors, and seniors in schools, Montgomery County Public Schools, on the other hand, has a grading policy for grades 6 through 12 that states grading scales are precise, clear, and fair and are communicated to students and parents. No letters were sent home to parents about the new honors policy from PGCPS, nor was it ever mentioned to the public that the policy would affect students' previous transcript grades. Interestingly, after raising awareness of the new weighted policy class, after raising awareness of the new weighted honors class policy and how not all students will have this beneficial effect on their transcript, many parents have complained and were baffled about how unfair this is. Yesterday, I sent out a mass email to every student asking them about how they feel about the new policy and have received over 80 letters of complaints and concerns about wanting to change the policy within 12 hours. I have also created a petition for the policy to be retroactive and almost 1,000 parents, students, and PGCPS staff members have signed it to make the honors policy fair for all students. Many students, staff members, and parents deeply care about this issue. They care because they know the credit that comes with the new honors policy is well-deserved for students who have worked their entire high school career. Montgomery County recognizes and quotes that honors courses require greater use of abstract and higher-level thinking skills and require research in projects of a more rigorous and challenging nature. I am not asking that honors and APs are weighted the same, but I am asking that honors classes taken by everyone still enrolled in PGCPS are retroactively affected by this new policy. Because honors and regular classes are incomparable in terms of rigor, why are they being weighed the same in past transcript grades? Adjusting students' GPAs with the new honors policy will also make the county look better since the GPA average of students will go up as a whole. A 12th grade student at Eleanor Roosevelt states she appreciates the time and effort it will take to make this policy equal among all PGS students is worth the benefit the students will reap in the future.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. Before I call the next speaker, I've been asked to make an announcement. If you own a Toyota 4Runner with a license plate 7AE4391, your lights are on. I don't see anyone jumping up to run out the door. There you go. Alright, we'll move on to our next speaker is Latasha Ramsey. Ms. Ramsey, I sure hope that's not who I just called out the door.
No.
Okay, good. Ms. Ramsey, is Ms. Ramsey here? No, okay. Our next speaker is William Michael Wisnewski. Mr. Wisnewski here. Wisnewski, okay. How about Jay Cameron? Is Jay Cameron here this evening? Nope, no Jay Cameron. Alright, moving right along. Kimberly Hall. Alright, good afternoon, good evening, Ms. Hall.
Hello. Hello, board members.
Hello.
Okay, I'm here to talk about the work session that was conducted on October 13th and absenteeism was the most talked about subject at that work session. I listened to the suggestions and the opinions given by the board, but not one time did I hear any board member suggest that transportation employees are parents too and that sometimes they need to stay home and tend to their own sick child or even their sick parent. One board member even said that 10% absenteeism rate is blowing my mind and several times the board asked to compare the bus driver absenteeism rate to that of teachers. Well, that is an unfair comparison. The only thing that these two positions have in common is the interaction with children. We don't have immediate access to a restroom, the teachers work in a school building. That's probably the number one reason why drivers call out sick is because they feel sick. You know, a teacher, when they feel sick, they can manage and push through because they have that luxury of being in the building where a bus driver or even attendant does not. The right side of the body controls six different operations on a school bus. You have the brake, the accelerator, the gear shift, the door, the handbrake, and the student lights. So if you don't feel well, bouncing and shaking around on a school bus is not going to make you feel any better. You know, driving a school bus is not just about driving a school bus. school bus is not just about driving a school bus. We are the best multitaskers. They are. We read directions. We discipline children, all while driving a bus, okay, through the eighth worst traffic in the nation, okay? If a bus driver does not feel well mentally or physically, the best place for them is at home, not in control of a school bus, not in the control of a school bus, okay? The accidents that can happen are far worse than if someone sat behind a desk and misplaced the decimal point, okay? Now, if my body is on the bus and my mind is somewhere else, then I am doing these parents a disservice, okay? Things that can happen could be a catastrophe, okay? So drivers need to be 100% at all times. And remember, we are not hauling dirt. We're not delivering packages. We are transporting people, and safety comes first. CDL drivers are held to a higher standard of driving. And so, in my opinion, a high absenteeism rate suggests that drivers understand the serious nature of their job, and the responsible thing to do is to call out sick when they don't feel well. There are times when I tried to soldier through some things, and eventually I ended up calling out sick. Experience has taught me that if you can't drive without limitations, then don't drive at all, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for those thoughtful comments, Ms. Hall. Let me just quickly point out, I certainly hope you also heard the numerous comments from our board members who talked about how much respect that they have for the wonderful work of our bus drivers.
I did hear that.
Thank you so much. All right, next up is Mr. David Kahn.
Fifteen years ago, Resherne Baker started the legislative process to take away the voting rights of the people of Prince George's County, the civil rights of the people of Prince George's County, and remove our all-elected school board. A couple of years later, he succeeded. We fought as much as we could. He won. We eventually got our board back with nine elected districts, and a few years later, he did it to us again. He requested and received from the legislature the power to run our schools. We don't need partisan politics involved in the education of our children, and yet we have two political appointees at the head of our school board and a political appointee running our school system, and the school board doesn't even have control of the CEO. This is wrong. HB1107 must be repealed, and there will be legislation, I'm told in this legislative session coming up next year, to do just that. And I urge every elected official in Prince George's County to get behind the movement to repeal 1107. That being said, the board chair mentioned that there's an election coming up in a few days. In that election, several school board seats are up for election. And I'd like to suggest to every voter who can see or hear what I'm saying tonight, not to be fooled by sample ballots. Look into these candidates. There are some who are independent and a voice for the people in education. There are some who are in the pockets of partisan politicians. Figure out which is which, who is who, and vote for the ones who are independent, who are not going to further politicize our school board. And speaking of sample ballots, there's a question on their Question D to create two more council seats and basically break the term limits that the voters voted for. This will take a million dollars or more that could go to our schools and instead pay politicians to stay in office longer. I urge you to vote against Question D and vote for school board members who will represent you and not represent the politicians. Once again, HB1107 must be repealed, and the civil rights of the voters of Prince George's County must be fully, fully, fully restored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Rosalyn Johnson.
Good evening. As a former member of the Prince George's County Board of Education, I wish to inform you that my statement is about 3 minutes and 40 seconds, and I wish to ask if you could please allow me those 40 additional seconds.
We'll go a couple of minutes, but just try to get it to three minutes, please.
Thank you. Even though your First Reader policy updates are designed to codify HB1107, that law must be repealed. HB1107 removed the Board of Education's authority to hire and oversee a superintendent. That authority must be regained. Currently, the board has no oversight authority over the CEO. There are no checks and balances nor accountability. One of the problems of HB1107 and how it affects our children is that under HB1107, the superintendent, the CEO, excuse me, has independent authority to hire and set salaries of executive-level employees, which also include additional administrative support employees. In school year 2014-15 alone, 117 administrative staff salaries total $29,546,507. Within that category, 28 staffs are noted as executive-level under bargaining code, with salaries for 25 of those executive staff alone totaling $3.9 million. A further review of the documents under Freedom of Information raises a number of questions. Why is no salary listed for the CEO? Shouldn't the CEO's salary be public information? Why is the board chair listed within the executive-level bargaining code? No other board member is listed. It is true, many identified employees in administration are needed: area superintendents, instructional supervisors, division chiefs, human resources, payroll, finance, etc. All of those areas have direct link to students because they provide teachers, principals, aides, librarians, transportation, food services, etc. But the question is, how many are really needed? Are those salaries commensurate with our financial resources, especially given the districts that are neighbors, that have smaller executive and administrative cabinets? For example, Fivex County has a team of 17. Population, 188,000 students. Montgomery County, 19, with 156,000 students. Yet, Prince George's County Leadership Administrative Team is 117, with a student population of 131,000. 57,000 fewer than Fairfax, 25,000 fewer than Montgomery County. PGCPS has twice as many as Fairfax, and 40% more than Montgomery. And this is our financial bite. Even though our student population needs more direct support noted because of the fact that our students receive free or reduced meals. Deciding the number of non-direct student-connected leadership...
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I'll actually wrap this up with a last sentence, please.
And I wish to say that I am not advocating not paying people, but can we afford to do this? We could have hired math teachers and coaches to do the work that is being paid to 117 employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Demetrius Deal.
Good afternoon. On September 16th, during a county council meeting, the CEO and his administration had the audacity to attack my character as it relates to persuading a parent not to come forth with allegations of suspected child abuse. If a proper investigation were conducted, the three of them would have known the facts will never add up. The timeline submitted to the feds was fabricated, and the principle of Wheatley was completely omitted from the report. I am a casualty in this culture of cover-up. What could I have gained from persuading a parent? Not any parent, but my parent, a parent who I orientated into the Head Start program, a parent who I motivated to run for policy council, a parent who I respected and trust I gained, a parent who went public to say I was her only supporter. And a parent...
Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm very sorry, Ms. Deal. You're talking about an issue that's a personnel-related one before the board. I need to get my board counsel to weigh in on advice about this.
Okay. I would caution Ms. Deal to not go into any of the merits of her case
Okay.
because the board would be hearing that.
Okay.
So I would advise you to really cease talking about...
Oh, I'm not going into merit. I'm not going into merit.
We just want to make sure we do not want to prejudice anything that happens in the future. It's very important legally.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, where was that? "And a parent I have been advocating for way before and way after her son was made to mop up his own urine, yet administrators involved ignored her cry. Even the CEO, who recently stated he will not be defined by crisis." But who would have thought, but who would have thought by the CEO neglecting the same parent email sent to him on January 19th, would later place the Head Start program in a crisis to lose their grant? Moreover, the CEO stated to the county council members that he was shocked when he read the overview findings report in August. So were you not shocked in February when it came out? The only thing shocking is the fact that the CEO and his administration allowed a child abuser to continue to work in the system for months in their attempt to cover this matter up. Now, that's shocking. Further, the CEO recently stated reforming the organization culture requires holding people accountable, and we will not protect an adult's job at the expense of a child's well-being. However, hasn't his very own job been protected at the expense of the well-being of children? Let's talk about accountability. The CEO knew about allegations of child abuse and neglect in the Head Start program as early as January. Also in February, when the feds put him on notice that the teacher was fired on February 17th, but instead of falling suit, they transferred this child abuser to another early childhood program at Warburg Gray. And to add insult to injury, on February 19th, the principal of HW Wheatley was allowed to send a letter home to the parents supporting the child abuser, stating she will be missed. Talk about an inappropriate tone.
I think that you are treading on a thin line
Okay.
about going into a pending matter.
Mm-hmm. I mean, this is public information.
I would...
Okay, I'll close it out. I'll close it out.
Continue with, but just not with, in your personal kind of situations, the one that we want to make sure that we don't legally put in jeopardy.
The bottom line is, the CEO only went into corrective action when a Head Start grant got snatched. There was no investigation or disciplinary actions taken in January, February, March, April, May, June, or July. Lastly, in a culture of cover-up, the public must demand answer, who's protecting whom at the cost of children, and why was this parent, the parent of the victim, treated premature like a predator by the CEO and his administration? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jocelyn Ford.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Ford, and I'm the chief steward for Transportation Chapter. I'm here to tell you about what it takes to be a bus driver and attendant for Prince George's County Public Schools. Do you know that we have buses that leave as early as 5:00 a.m. to start their day? Let me tell you about some of our bus attendants who have been working for the county for over three years. They come to work every day. They work very well with all the children on the buses. It takes someone with compassion to work with children because they are our most precious cargo. Bus attendants at all the bus lots are asking, when will we become permanent with working over three years? So with that being said, let's talk about the shortage of bus drivers. Do you know what it takes to be a bus driver? It takes a person who is concerned with the well-being of all the children. We have to worry about the traffic. We have to make sure we make it to our stops on time. We have to watch out for late children running to the bus stop. We have to make sure the parents are at the bus stop for the pre-Ks and the kindergartens. If the parents are not there, we have to take them back to school, which makes us late for our next school, which is a domino effect. And it's all about safety for all the children in the county. Do you know how many nose I wipe daily when it's coughing, cold, and flu season? Do you know how many shoes I tie because the kids are coming to the bus with their shoes loose? Do you know how many sick children I take to school on a bus? This is a look into what it takes to be a bus driver and a bus attendant for Prince George's County Public School. I would like to invite all the school board members, not some of y'all. I maybe even want to challenge y'all. Come ride with us. Not on our best runs, because some people put you on the best run. Y'all should see some of our, not some nice runs. And it will, you know, it will open your eyes up into what we do as employees for Prince George's County, and our work conditions, and let you see what kind of work conditions we work in. And with that said, I would like to say thank you and good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate those comments. Our next speaker is Peggy Higgins. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm also a former board member and would ask courtesy for probably about 30 seconds over three minutes. I had no idea Ms. Deal was coming this evening, so we're going to repeat some of the same data. I'm here this evening to provide a timeline over the last several months, especially in light of the board chair Eubanks' comment that, quote, "How we choose to respond to crisis is well within our control." We all know that from August 2015 to February 2016, a teacher's aide at Sylvania Woods was sexually abusing children ages eight, nine, to 13. 23 children have been identified, and the offender is facing 270 charges. Simultaneously, in November 2015, a bus aide was reported for suspicion of sexual abuse of special-needs children. When the bus driver was again on that bus route with the same age, she reported additional sex abuse of children, this time also to CPS and the police. The bus aide is facing 10 counts of sexually abusing special-needs four- and five-year-olds. We are now aware of the abuse incidents that were also simultaneously occurring at Head Start, but we didn't know that on January 19th, the then-chair of the Parent Council for Head Start and mother of the three-year-old who was forced to mop up his own urine, sent an email detailing what happened to her child and other children. Dr. Maxwell has copied on that email. February 29th, 2016, the federal Head Start program notified board chair Eubanks, copying Dr. Maxwell, that abuse and mistreatment of children is occurring. The report states that the mother's filing of a peace order and a judge's upholding it was followed by the teacher being removed from the classroom, at least in Head Start. The teacher was transferred to a PGCPS early childhood center. Then we have Dr. Maxwell's chief of staff, George Margolis, April 7th email regarding Head Start problems. He writes that the Head Start minutes were to be included under follow-up items and that, quote, "This will not be a discussion item. Dr. Eubanks will simply make reference that they are posted there for board members reading pleasure," unquote. At the same time, we know from the recent ethics complaint that some of Dr. Eubanks' focus in April was putting in over $100,000 sole-source contract for a former colleague, former-appointed board member's communications company on the April 28 budget consent agenda. In mid-August 2016, the federal government withdrew Head Start's $6.5 million grant because of Prince George's County's failure to correct the abuse of three-to-five-year-olds. One of Dr. Maxwell's responses at the time, quote, "Federal standards are very high," unquote. In their briefing to the council, the administration said they were not sure if responsibility can be placed on Dr. Eubanks and Dr. Maxwell to be responsible for the supervision of 20,000 employees and be responsible for their behaviors, end quote, "We haven't yet figured out what to do with those who are involved who commit criminal acts." Really? The lack of judgment continues. There are selective suspensions and firing even of whistleblowers who consistently reported mistreatment to their supervisors. The Head Start Family Services worker, who the parent of the three-year-old child, as stated was her only advocate, fired. The bus driver who reported the bus aide, that bus driver retired rather than deal with the retaliation.
Thank you.
It is past, one last sentence. It is past time for our community to see what this is. County Executive Baker, with the help of our state's legislature delegation, has created a system that is driven by what is politically... that is driven by what is politically expedient. Our children's trust us, they're babies. Are we deserving of that trust? Sadly, I think not.
Thank you. Again, it's not our policy to respond. Let me say that we look forward to the full investigation. I look forward to any and all investigations about, uh, uh, any of, of this. And it is happening with MSDE and I'm, we will, uh, be active participants in making sure that, uh, we are fully transparent. Coming up next, Tanya Wingfield.
Good evening. First, I want to commend our school-based personnel and volunteers who continue to do their part to support and educate our students and our parents. On November first, we will celebrate Maryland's Emancipation Day. And as I thought about what th- this day signifies, I thought and asked to myself, after over one hundred and fifteen, fifty-two years, as one writer put it, Maryland still struggles with its Confederate-friendly past. What makes that question so significant to me is school safety in Prince George's County. Is because I looked at the policies and the procedures that our current CEO was governed by for seven years as superintendent of Anaronto County, uh, Public Schools. And I asked myself why, if the CEO, knowing the power entrusted to him under HB eleven oh seven, did not implement the same policies used in Anaronto County to protect the children of Prince George's County? For example, the guide for developing an effective volunteer program, which emphasizes that all abusive children must be reported to Child Protective Services or the police. The handbook that bears his picture. And again, it ensures parents, all incidents of abuse must be reported to CPS or the police in accordance to Maryland law. Policy nine oh four point five, that speaks specifically to reporting child abuse and neglect directly to CPS or the police and not a supervisor. Policy J C C, formerly Policy nine oh two point one seven, which speaks to the attacks against students or any employee in the school and how it's handled. Policy three oh five, ensuring the formulation of all administrative procedures are in accordance with COLMOR. Policy five oh six oh one, establishing a crisis intervention team comprised of internal staff so parents and students don't have to wait for a focus group to be formed to address critical child safety issues. Policy eight hundred oh five, nepotism, which could address the quagmire that's in our school system that has employees afraid to report incidents of misconduct because they're unaware of a family tree. Maryland, um, Emancipation Day, November first nineteen, eighteen sixty-four. The children of Prince George's County deserve the same protection to a safe school environment. And the CEO failed to implement those policies, though he was well aware of it because he did it in Anaronto County. And he abided by it for seven years. And of course, he knows that unless the county executive speaks, he is not held accountable for anything he deliberately fails to do. This is just another reason why HB eleven oh seven needs to be repealed. It must be repealed and all leadership appointed under this law removed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sue Frederick.
Good evening. I am a grandparent guardian to two students in public school here and a volunteer at both their schools. I would like to address some concerns with changes or enforcement of volunteering. I understand the importance of never allowing a volunteer to be alone with a student who is not your own. However, I am concerned with the no-touching policy of students. When a little kid comes up to you and gives you a hug, as I understand it, we are supposed to jump back, ah! And discourage this behavior. This would be upsetting to the child, though. Think about if you were an adult and someone did this when you offered a handshake. Um, and little kids hug and touch adult volunteers and staff quite frequently. I understand this is to prevent child abuse. However, that brings me to my next point. The new policy of requiring twenty-four hours' notice before visiting a classroom. If a parent guardian suspects that their child is being abused, either verbally or otherwise, giving the teacher any notice at all that you were coming totally guarantees that you will not observe any behavior. But as parents, guardians of young children, we understand that they do exaggerate or totally lie about things sometimes. We would not want to actually suggest or accuse a teacher or other staff member of abuse without checking it out for ourselves as much as possible. This checking might entail listening outside the door of the classroom. But once again, if we give someone the twenty-four-hour notice, I can guarantee you, there will be no problem. You'll not be able to hear any yelling. Plus, sometimes things do come up unexpectedly where you might need to talk with the teacher. My second grader frequently forgets to bring home papers and I need to go to the classroom to help her find these papers, permission slips, et cetera. Do I need the twenty-four-hour notice? And my last concern is the lack of outside trashcans at some of the schools. Can we please place one outside the front door and possibly outside of the play area? This might discourage some littering. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that valuable feedback. Our next speaker is Dana Hallman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a PG County parent, resident, Ask Me Local twenty-two fifty member and school bus driver. I'm coming before you because transportation workers are in desperate need of a raise and better working conditions. Some drivers have not gotten anniversary raises for up to five years. It seems everything is going up except our pay. It has been brought to my attention that drivers have been hired, yet only a few seem to stay. This is a direct effect of low and prorated pay. On June fifth, twenty sixteen, PG County's Office of Communications reported the Board of Education approved a one-point-nine-three-billion dollars for the fiscal year of twenty seventeen. It was also reported that the budget would provide funding for salary enhancements for all staff. This has not happened. The PG County bus driver is looked at by our employer, school staff, and most PG County residents as trash and we are treated as such. We are, for the most part, overworked, underpaid, disrespected by our employer, students, and the community. We are als- always overlooked. We are supposed to get an anniversary step every year until we reach top pay. This hasn't happened. We are expected to be happy with a two or three percent COLA raise that makes no difference on our paycheck. We can't even bring home a decent salary. Example, if you make eighteen dollars per hour, you actually pay thirteen dollars per hour because of the proration, which is a hundred eighty-five days broken up into twenty-two equal checks. Then the deductions come, then the health insurance, then the mandatory pension. After they're finished chapping away at your money, most of us are forced to go tax-exempt. And still you are extremely lucky to bring home a thousand dollars of pay. Can you imagine some employees trying to run a household and take care of your children with as little as six hundred dollars bi-weekly, living in PG County? And for employees fortunate enough to have help with their household and want to have their own children, we aren't worthy enough of maternity leave because it isn't offered to us. It is depressingly difficult. We need our raises. A lot of people miss work because they have to work second jobs to make ends meet. They are tired and sleep deprived. And there is also the sentiment of what does it matter either way, I'm going to be broke. And also riding around on an un-air-conditioned bus in three-digit heat full of children. Isn't it strange that if you leave a pet in a hot car, it is inhumane? And you can face being fined and/or arrested. But nobody finds it inhumane to leave a school bus driver in a hot bus for hours. We work for and are members of the same community that abuses us. We love our kids that we transport, but it seems no one cares about us. The stress level of trying to make it is sometimes unbearable. Every fall, a lot of employees are evicted and cars are repossessed because of the three-to-four-hour, four-day-a-week runs we are expected to live off of during the summer. These are just some of the reasons why there is and will continue to be a driver shortage in the county. It is sad the county would, it, it is sad the county would rather contract out work when the dedicated workers that are here are treated like yesterday's trash. The struggle for the PG County bus driver is outrageously tremendous and yet we are always thrown under the bus. One definition of justice is just behavior or treatment. Transportation workers are given neither. We need justice now. We are tired of waiting. Wait usually means never in PG Transportation. Justice too long delayed is justice denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Rob Hampton. Is Rob Hampton here? Is Alicia Ren here?
Okay, I'm gonna try this again, less nervous. Good evening, board, board members, parents, and constituents. I am here to speak on some transportation issues from the bus driver's perspective. Let me preface my comments with the fact that I'm a parent of four Prince George's County, um, school students and I'm also graduate of Prince George's County Schools. I have been a bus driver for four years and in that time, I have watched morale among, amongst drivers and aides steadily decline. A lot of drivers feel they have no support, no support from parents, supervisors, school staff, and board members. As a member of Ask Me Local twenty-two fifty, we are governed by contract, a contract that is continually disregarded and not upheld. It seems we have to fight for everything. Upper management pick and choose what parts of the contract they want to follow. We lack support from school staff. For example, last year, I had a student who was written up more than thirty times for various infractions on my bus, from use of profanity to bullying. The student was only removed off my bus once. The parent of this child threatened to harass me all school year to the point where I had to obtain a peace order, which is still in effect today. This is what the media doesn't cover. And let me say this is becoming the norm and not the exception. Another problem we have is driver retention. During the hiring and training process, drivers are promised a competitive hourly wage with annual raises on their anniversary date of hire. This is a flat-out lie. The fact of a pay freeze is never mentioned, thus a lot of new hires seek employment elsewhere. Lastly, I would like to speak on the increased number of drivers who obtain second, third, weekend jobs to make ends meet, which goes to the high absentee rate that was discussed at the last meeting. Instead of coming to work tired, some drivers take off to catch up on rest. Most, if not, um, some, if not most, drivers have not had a raise in over eight years. We need our contract fully honored and our steps reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ren. Final registered speaker this evening is Cicely Lamoth.
Good evening. Um, parents, kids, and school leaders are scrambling to deal with the unprecedented number of teachers on administrative leave. Since it does not appear that this problem is going away anytime soon, it is time for PG CPS to be proactive rather than reactive and find ways to ease the transition for everyone involved. So here are four suggestions that I think may help. One, give parents relevant information about who is taking over the class when a teacher is on administrative leave. It is helpful to know the name of the long-term substitute, but it's equally important to know how we can get in touch with them. Provide an email address and inform parents what steps are available to get in contact with the long-term sub or another school official if we have questions on assignments or concerns about our child's performance. Number two, standardize the timing in which parents are notified when there is going to be an extended absence of a teacher. Why are parents in the dark for weeks about who is teaching our children? PG CPS should implement protocols that standardize the timing in which this information is provided. Right now, it seems as if the timing is triggered after enough parents complain. This is not efficient or effective. Formalize the timeline and require each principal to send a letter home to parents within a certain time period, preferably forty-eight to seventy-two hours, after it's determined that a teacher will be placed on administrative leave. Number three, give principals and other school leaders the tools necessary to answer questions from parents about a teacher's absence. It is clear that there is uncertainty in what information can be provided to parents while still maintaining the confidence of teachers. Let's take the uncertainty out and let's stop the rumors and speculation, which is far more harmful to an innocent teacher's reputation. Consider preparing a standard script for school leaders to have available to a- address these questions. There has to be some wording that doesn't violate teacher privacy while also giving parents what they need to know to understand what's happening in their child's classroom. And lastly, implement strategies to ensure children with long-term substitutes are not falling behind. And this is of most importance. I've heard a number of insurances from various administrators stating that their first priority is to maintain a consistent quality education for our children, even in periods where there's a long-term substitute. Yet there are plenty of stories of classrooms where no grades have been posted to school max for weeks, completed as homework assignments come home day after day with no evidence that they've been graded or even looked at. There's no clear answers whether these long-term subs are even periodically observed in the classroom. Now, I don't have these expectations of a typical substitute, but the criteria is different when stepping into the role of a teacher for a long period of time. Ensure that school leaders have the knowledge or tools necessary to give substitutes timely access to school max or alternatively designate someone to enter the grades on their behalf. This process should be implemented at the time of the long-term sub is placed in the classroom. And lastly, mandate that long-term subs are periodically observed by a principal or assistant principal to ensure that they're adhering to the curriculum and have appropriate classroom management skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoth, for that feedback and for those very cogent and thoughtful suggestions. That concludes our public speaking for this evening. Thank you all very much for the commitment you've taken to come out, uh, this evening to share your thoughts with us. Uh, we move on on our agenda. We have no discussion items, so we'll move on to item five point O, which is the consent agenda. I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an, uh, opening statement and introduction of items five point one through five point five under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items five point one to five point five require board approval of proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools. Native American Heritage Month, American Education Week, Maryland Emancipation Day, School Psychology Awareness Week, and National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week.
Thank you, colleagues. My intended motion to approve items five point one through five point five under the consent agenda.
Second?
It has been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. I now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items six point one through six point three under the budget consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items six point one to six point three require board approval of the following. November sixteen, November two thousand and sixteen expenditure requirements, fiscal year seventeen annual operating budget increase in restricted FTE one point O, and the FY seventeen tax-exempt municipal lease purchasing financing for the procurement of buses, textbooks, and instructional computers.
Thank you. Which one do you want to pull? Uh, we're gonna, you, you want to ask questions about it or debate, or, or debate? You want to pull it for separate consideration? All right. It's been requested to pull six point three. I have a motion to approve items six point one and six point two under the consent agenda. It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Item six point three, Ms. Epps wanted to pull that. Ms. Epps, you have questions? You want to put a motion on the floor? Would someone else want to put a motion to approve item six point three? Did I hear second? Anybody want to second item six point three? Thank you. It's been moved to second. Ms. Epps.
So I just wanted to, um, understand the lease purchase, um, agreement with regard to, I understand it for replacement buses, I understand it for instructional computers. I don't really understand why that's connected with textbooks. So I just wanted to understand that process a little bit better.
It's really a financing mechanism to get more bang for your buck. Uh, we're able to finance the buses, the textbooks, and the instructional computer refresh, uh, over a five-year period.
So are you also financing textbooks?
Yes. We're able to buy more textbooks using this methodology. We're able to provide nineteen adoptions by using nineteen.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Nineteen adoptions, we're able to. Nineteen adoptions we're able to buy. We're able to buy one hundred fifty-nine buses, and we're able to upgrade our servers using this finance method. And we've done this consistently for the last four or five years.
Okay. I get that. I just want to understand what the, why do we need to finance textbooks? I understand buses, I understand-
Because you can leverage your dollars if you pay cash for it each year, you'd have less dollars available by financing it over a five-year period.
What's the shelf life for on a textbook? Or the, you know, use life of a textbook? And, 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 does that include eBooks and, you know, technological books, or books with technology attached to it? Just, I just want to break that down a little bit.
Actually, all of those components is why it actually varies for the shelf life. For example, last year, we adopted an online text-for-discovery education, and that's updated annually, but we also pay a fee each year for that information to be updated, so it's not a one-time fee. And this is part of that whole lease purchase piece, is that when you purchase the more updated technology components for our educational textbooks, you still have to pay that company a fee in order to make sure that information is updated.
So is this, so this is just the tech, the, like, eBooks, or is this also hard covers?
It's both.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And again, if we didn't use this method, we would have to incur twenty-three-point-four million dollars in expenditure this year. Using this method, we incur four-point-eight, because we can leverage that over five years. And as you see in the BAS, we got a very favorable interest rate of one-point-two percent.
The, the company, the financing company is a minority business, correct?
Yes, it is.
Do we have any more detail other than the fact that it's listed as an MBE in terms of who the, like, who the principal is?
I don't know offhand, but we've done business with them before. I can get that information for you.
Okay, could you, for follow-up? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, you have questions?
Just one question regarding the lease purchase agreements. We've signed several of these over the years. What's, Mr. Brown, what's the total amount we have under lease purchase agreements?
Before this, we have outstanding principal of a hundred and five million, and annual payments of thirty-six million. With this, the total outstanding is a hundred and twenty-nine million with annual payments of forty-point-eight, forty-point-eight million. Also, I would share with you that one of our outstanding lease purchase matures this year, two mature in the next fiscal year, and two in FY '19.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'm going to put the vote before you, and actually, I'm going to put 6.3 before you, and then with your permission, go back to the other ones because they're budget items, I'm supposed to be calling the roll on these, and I did not do that on the first motion. So let's, since we're already on 6.3, could you please call the roll for item, for the motion on 6.3?
Yes, sir. Dr. Anderson. Ms. Boston. Ms. Epps. Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Jacobs.
No.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace.
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks.
Yes.
Ms. Epps. Eight ayes, one nay, one abstention, sir.
Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, I'm now going to go back to items 6.1 and 6.2 and revote, this time by calling the roll. Would you please call the roll for items 6.1 and 6.2?
Dr. Anderson. Ms. Boston. Ms. Epps. Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs. Ms. Quinteros-Grady.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace.
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ten ayes, sir.
Thank you, that motion carries. We have no second readers this evening, so we'll move on to item 9.0, New Business First Reader. I yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction to item, of items 9.1 and 9.3 under New Business First Readers.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks and members of the board. First readers tonight include next-year school calendar, the adoption of legislative platform and policy updates for the Board of Education handbook. They require no discussion. However, I would like to ask the chair if I could perhaps have some direction from the board. You know that there is a, uh, there are two, I think, governor's executive orders related to school calendars. The calendar included in this packet is the tentative one, which you approved last year for next year. And while, you know, we're certainly happy to hear whatever and all comments you may have tonight, if your intention as a board is to go ahead with this calendar, it would be good to know that. If you'd like us to bring one that comports with the governor's executive orders, I'd like to know that as well. I can bring them both to you, or I can bring a substitute, and so some direction either tonight or between now and when we bring it back to second reader would be good. We have discussed having a survey of parents, making available parent survey to see what their druthers are as it relates to some of the, you know, things that are in the calendar that makes the year a bit longer. But again, this is the calendar you tentatively approved last year for next year with your two-year calendar cycle, and I would not like to, you know, bring it back to you in the next second reader as it is right now, if you prefer to have something else.
Thank you. So again, colleagues, the calendar item before you is similar to the tentative calendar that we approved last year. It does not comport with the governor's mandate about the start time or end time for school, so we need to make some clear decisions about where to proceed and provide some direction to the CEO's office in that regard. Again, many folks, as has been mentioned, have essentially tentatively approved two different calendars. You mentioned about having some outreach to the community, and I know that's been done in other places. So colleagues, I'll open up the floor for some suggestions and/or for ready to make some specific recommendations tonight or at the next meeting for Dr. Maxwell. I have so far Mr. Valentine and Mr. Wallace, and Ms. Quinteros-Grady. Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. I believe this was discussed early this week at the Maryland Association of Board Education Legislative Meeting. It appears that many of our counterparts, our colleagues in other districts are preparing two calendars, as the board chair mentioned. I think it's useful, piece of information, as we are speaking with parents about the potential impact of this change and what preparations they should be making in the event that is not stricken down by the legislature this session. I think for those of us who oppose this, again, it's useful information to share with colleagues to, again, get a full picture of the impact this will have, not only on families, but also on our educators, bus drivers, and our staff throughout the year. So I would highly recommend we do so. It will allow us, myself and my colleague, Mr. Wallace, as representatives of this body to the MAE Legislative Committee, to go back to that body and to become part, hopefully, of a statewide campaign to ensure that this does not move forward. So I would recommend us having both calendars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo my colleague, Mr. Valentine, on his sentiments about the MAE Legislative Committee meeting. I was present there, and there was a lot of conversation around the governor's statement that there's a certain dollar amount, millions of dollars, that would come from this executive order ranging from five to almost eight million dollars in additional economic revenue, and actually using those dollars to support resources for school districts like ours for summer learning loss that would come as a result of this post-Labor Day start. I know I have the minority ideology from, you know, just my education policy mindset that our school year should be longer, especially for students in my district, where the communities are heavily reliant upon the schools being open. But I want to echo Mr. Valentine's request from our colleagues that we have two calendars and that I can go to my constituents and see and show them what they would lose by starting after Labor Day. And I've said it publicly, I'll say it again, I believe in local control of our boards of education. I do not believe that a governor's mandate in support of Thrasher's French Fries should weigh on how we govern our school system, and I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Ms. Quinteros-Grady. So I'm just getting some recommendation from my executive director about how we might handle our recommendation.
So I just want to echo regarding having the two different calendars. I know that I've spoken to colleagues in other jurisdictions, and that's something that they're doing, but I also really find value in getting input from the parents and teachers, just so that we take into account that feedback. And then I just wanted to ask regarding, what is the timeline by when do we have to adopt the calendar?
I think it's really up to the board. I mean, we usually like to give people as much notice as we can about, you know, the start and end times of schools, but we're talking about next school year's calendar, so whether it's adopted in December or whether it's adopted in February is really up to you. Some school districts in the state have already adopted calendars, some, you know, will have them in the coming months, so there's no hard and fast deadline by which it must be done, like there are some other things that we deal with.
Okay, and that was it for me.
I will say, so worth noting through process here, if we decide to recommend today to bring two calendars, in all likelihood, what we'll be asking is them to reintroduce a calendar as first reader at the next, at the next meeting, so it would be approved and, or could be, you know, depending until unless folks want to kind of expedite this process. My other question is, I'm intrigued by the idea of going out and getting, and doing a survey with parents. Do we have, what, how soon can we do that and then get that data in time enough, particularly if we're gonna, I mean, I would imagine that the survey data is not going to be about our tentative calendar that we have for a regular school year. It would be more for it to impact if we're gonna do the second calendar, which might, in some ways, more conform to the governor's requirements, that how could, how could that look? So how can we get feedback from parents in time enough to then bring that to the board for us to kind of take action?
Well, I don't think we could do it by the next meeting. If my memory serves me, I think the next meeting is November 10, and there is, you know, Election Day in there, and next week, I mean, November begins next week, so I would suggest that it's, would be a little bit longer than that before we would bring it back, and I think that our approach would be to say to folks, you know, would you, would you be willing to have spring break, you know, shortened? Would you be willing to have, you know, this or that? Would you be willing to have half-days instead of whole days when it comes to things? And employees and parents may differ on some of those items, but, I mean, those are the options that we have available to us. I mean, we have, you know, holidays that we celebrate or days that we have off that we don't necessarily have to. So, you know, one of the things, when we look at calendars, our spring break is typically after the Easter holiday. Easter Monday is mandated by state law, Good Friday is not, and so we could start our, we could get a day one way or another there with Friday and just having just the week following Easter off, not the week plus the Friday before. So it would be, you know, kind of just putting forth some options. Some of it could be open-ended to say, what would your, you know, what would you eliminate if you, you know, if you were making recommendations? Some of them could be direct, but it would probably take us, I would guess, you know, maybe a week to get it up, you know, and running, and then, you know, we'd leave it run a week maybe for input and then analyze it.
Yeah, so in addition, I think last year or the year before, we did an employee survey due to snow days. We set out an employee survey, worked with our union partners and others to allow our employees to give information, and we kept it up for a very short amount of time. We had to make a quick decision. Here, we're actually suggesting that we would keep it up for a couple of weeks so that people, you know, we publicize the information and get it. We actually asked, I know Boardman McCutcheon, Wallace was at the MAE Legislative, but believe that other jurisdictions have utilized different means. At least one has done a parent survey, so we've requested the survey to see if the information is applicable to us and whether or not some of the same types of questions, and also the type of data that they got back. So we would try our hardest to be open and allow parents, our employees, and others to give a full picture of what this, the impact would be, and then from there, we'll build a calendar looking at those priorities that are identified.
Thank you. Ms. Boston, and Ms. Jacobs.
Yeah, pretty much, Mr. Rose, that was my question. If we're gonna do a survey, would it not just be opened up to parents, but also to our employees, and also to work with our labor unions to see, you know, when they take a poll of their constituents and how they would like to see we handle some of those days, if that's the way we want to look at it. But I am in support of bringing a, another calendar, so we can have two to kind of think about and look at, and also doing a survey, because I think that would help us with the decision that we might want to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs.
I just didn't want to make an assumption, but I would suggest that the survey include optional dates for the end of the school year. I know Montgomery County actually included dates at the end of the school year and said to parents, what if the last day of school was June 20th or whatever? And that also helped parents in making their decision on the previous question. So I would just say, make sure we include a question or questions that specifically go to the end of the school year.
We're happy to do that. I would say that the governor's executive order directs, though, that we end by June 15, and so, well, right, but when you say June 20, I mean, I don't really think that we have a, if we're gonna comport with his executive order, I mean, it is-
I'm sorry, the example was June 15 for Montgomery County. I just, you're out of number.
I don't see anyone buzzing, and colleagues, I don't think a motion is necessary here, although we certainly can take one if you like.
Appreciate the input.
But what, I think it's clear, we can, we can move on approving this as the first calendar, if that is the will of the board, and then expect to see a second calendar that has been created subsequent to having some substantive feedback from families and employees that would give some good options that could help fit into the governor's new executive order. So without objection, unless folks want to make a specific motion about this, I think we can cover it. Otherwise, we can just make a motion to adopt items 9.1 through 9.3 under first reader. Ms. Boston.
I would like to make a motion to postpone the adoption of 9.1 until we actually have both calendars that we can approve. That's my motion.
All right, is there a second? Any discussion about that? So we, so instead of making any mo, any move with this now, we will table, we will, is it table or postpone, whichever is the right?
Or I can withdraw, whichever I prefer.
Postpone, I just postpone, because tabling means something different. We'll postpone this vote until we can vote on both calendars at once. That is the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Boston, for that great suggestion. So I will now entertain a motion to approve items 9.2 and 9.3 under first reader. It has been moved and seconded to approve items 9.2 and 9.3 under first reader. Again, we'll have discussion come second reader at the next meeting, so I will put the vote before you. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. That motion carries. Colleagues, item 11.0, follow-up items. Follow-up items from the October 13, 2016 Board Work Session will be posted in Board Docs upon receipt, and that should happen soon. And I will move on to 12.0 and ask for a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on Thursday, October 25, 2016. It has been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education hereby approve actions taken in executive session on October 25, 2016, and are as follows: personnel matters, personnel appointments, legal matters, and administrative matters. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues, may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some will.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Colleagues, we are adjourned. Please go and enjoy the baseball game or whatever else you're doing this evening.